City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
I have some questions about 2626 Rees.
Alderman Fisk.
Oh, you have jokes.
Alderman Braithwaite.
I think we should.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Suffertin.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
And Alderman Flynn.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Terrific. Thank you, and welcome everybody to the Monday, April 22, 2019 Evanston City Council Meeting. And today is not only the city council meeting, today's Earth Day.
Yay!
And so yay. Quick reminder for everybody, Earth Day started on April 22, which is today, in 1970. Millions of people took to the streets calling on leaders around the world to take bold action to reduce the negative impacts of 150 years of industrial development. In Evanston, we celebrate Earth Day with events throughout the month, including Cleanup Evanston, which will take place this Saturday, April 27. If you're interested in helping clean up our city, please visit volunteerevanston.org. As climate change accelerates, it's even more important for all of us to actively work to do things that help the environment and reduce our impact. Thank you for everyone for doing your part. A good segue from that right into next month, I'm going to issue a proclamation. I'm not going to read it tonight, but for Arbor Day. And Arbor Day is about really the importance of trees in our country and the benefit that we get from them. On tonight's agenda, there's actually an item for approving and planting trees. We are fortunate here to be a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And so, the last Friday of April 2019, I've announced it as Arbor Day in the city of Evanston, and urge all residents to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support the urban forestry program to participate in activities in the weeks following Arbor Day, and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being for the present and the future generations. Two other announcements. I want to offer our best wishes to David Jones, who has -- David Jones is the chaplain, one of our chaplains, to the fire department and the police department. And David has been fighting cancer and was in the hospital just recently for some surgery. But if you know David Jones, remains as positive and optimistic as ever. So, he's a real blessing to Evanston, and we wish him all of our blessings. Lastly, you know, one of the great things about being mayor is you get to talk to lots of young people in the community. And we have lots of young people that come into the Evanston Chamber councils. And I speak to them. Clerk Reed sometimes speaks to them. Some of the aldermen speak to them. And I always encourage them. I say, "Well, you know, to really get a sense of what government is like, and local government, you need to come to a city council meeting." So I was so excited today when I saw Lucas. Lucas, stand up for a second right there, all right? When I saw Lucas, a fifth grader who was here just a couple weeks ago, and he said, "You know, I really want to go to a city council meeting, and maybe someday I want to be an alderman, or a mayor, or congressman, or who knows what? President of the United States? Yeah, I think you're already qualified there." So, I shouldn't get so political, but anyway, I'm excited that you're -- I'm excited, and we're all excited that you're here, Lucas. And I hope we will all demonstrate what good government and good public participation looks like tonight. So, welcome, Lucas. With that, I'm going to turn over to the city manager for any announcements you might have. All right, City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I have three announcements. The first is from Jen Brennan, who was unable to attend tonight's city council meeting. But Jen would like to express her sincere support for the early childhood programming at the Robert Crown Center. She's a parent and community member of two children who attend camps and classes, and preschool programming at Robert Crown. And she cannot say enough wonderful things about the preschool programming, including the directors, teachers, and teachers assistants, and the curriculum. So that person is in support of Robert Crown. I have another announcement from Ally Harned, who wants to let folks know about the LAN, the Local Area Network Meeting, that is April 23, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. here at the Civic Center in the parasol room. You can reserve a spot for that meeting by emailing Also, I received a memorandum from members of the community, Misty Wittenberg, Mike Vasolko, Mary Rosensky, Claire Kelly, who are all -- who identify themselves as city of Evanston taxpayers. And this is regarding the A and B general obligation bonds. It is a lengthy memorandum, and it will be included in the minutes for -- and it is also on the counter, on the table out there for folks to read through. Those are my announcements for today.
Terrific. Thank you, Clerk Reed. We're now going to move on to public comment. Just because we have some new people here, I want to make sure everybody's clear on public comment. The purpose of public comment is for the public to share their perspective and concerns with the city council. It is an opportunity for the folks up here, your elected officials, to listen. It is not an opportunity to engage or to debate, and to ask questions and have a back-and-forth with the answers. That's not the intent of public comment, but it's an opportunity for the public to share your perspectives. City Council rules, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment. The way it goes is after 45 minutes, our rules say that we are to go ahead and then start the meeting and get into our other items on our agenda. I do ask that everybody, you know, as always, try to, you know, be civil. It doesn't mean that you're not passionate. We have lots of passion here in Evanston. But please refrain from using any threatening, personal, abusive language, or anything along those lines. With that, we're going to go ahead today with our comment. We've got 21 people that have signed up, so I'm going to give everybody two minutes. I'm going to ask Clerk Reed if he will keep track of the time, and City Manager Bob Kowit if he'll just keep track of the overall 45 minutes. And, you know, if you hear the buzzer go off on Clerk Reed's phone, if you can just wrap it up 10 seconds later, we would appreciate it, and just be respectful for everybody that wants to talk. So with that, welcome, everybody. And we'll start off. We've got Mike Vasolko, then Harris Miller, then Delainne Morris. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name. Welcome.
Good evening. Mike Vasolko, 2728 Rees, Avenue Evanston. Two messages, in case I get cut off. The council does not have all the information needed to make an informed decision on the bond sale. So we're asking that the council delay the bond vote, and meet with the community, and hear what we have to offer in the way of suggestions. We've asked this before. We're asking it tonight. All we want to do is be able to afford to live peacefully in Evanston. More and more debt is not the way forward. The debt we have so far is going to drain valuable resources from our moral budget, from social programs, and the like. Robert Crown's debt goes on until 2044. This is a moment to say stop. Let's think a little bit longer before we take an irreversible, dangerous step forward into deeper debt. Please delay the vote until later time. Schedule a meeting to meet with us. I have to correct the record from last week's meeting, when the city attorney made a statement, I think, that was fear-mongering, suggesting that if the council voted to postpone the bond, or to make changes to the scope of the contract with the general contractor, that the contractor would sue us. That's just not true. I've spoken to people at high levels of Boyne Andrews. They would never sue the city of Evanston, and they'd be happy to do value engineering with us. The council should be given factual, truthful information in order to make informed decisions. The council does not have access, and the public does not have access, to the remaining letters of intent. We don't know what those letters include, how much money is being donated, and whether or not you even need to have the bond sale. We should wait for the letters of intent. Council needs to be given factual and truthful information in order to make informed decisions. We have a FOIA request for MWEBE and local hiring participation that was denied. We don't know if the contractor is meeting those hiring participation goals. The council should wait and get factual information in order to make informed decisions. I made a FOIA request
I need you to wrap up, Mike.
For the bond council's documentation of the tougher hearing last year. Somebody was going to show up behind me. This is what the response was. It was fully redacted. No one could tell what was received, what the rules were, and how we did or didn't meet those requirements. The council doesn't have this memorandum. Only the mayor and Alderman Wilson received copies of this memorandum. You should see it in order to make an informed decision about the next bond debt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Next, we've got Harris Miller, Delainne Morris, and then Misty Wittenberg. Welcome, Harris.
Thank you. Good evening. Two weeks ago, City Clerk Devin Reed brought the idea to allow the public to speak through alternative means upon request. I sit on several boards and committees where it's welcomed in the community. The council made excuses to avoid his idea, and it was shot down. I find this unacceptable. This causes our public meetings to be more exclusive rather than inclusive. Remember, not everyone can come to City Hall due to disabilities, lack of transportation, young children, or travel. Therefore, City Clerk Reed's public common idea via alternative mediums should be recommended to the Rules Committee for discussion. Corporation Council and the Law Department should make sure all meetings are ADA compliant, and that Clerk Reed be respectfully allowed to introduce his ideas to the public. Everyone should have a voice for equity to flourish. Finally, please vote against the second Robert Crown bonds. Our city does not need further debt. Let's put our funds towards the 5th, 2nd, and 8th ward's needs instead. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Harris. Delainne Morris, Misty Wittenberg, and then Tricia Conley. And when you come up to the podium, I had somebody email me recently and just ask if I could remind folks, if you could just give your name when you come up to the podium. It would be helpful.
Delainne had to leave.
Oh, Delainne had to leave? Okay. Misty Wittenberg, then. We're going to take you. Then Tricia Conley, then Doreen Price.
And just as a note, the timer will go off at a minute and 50 seconds, so you will have to
How much do we have? I'm sorry?
Two minutes, but it will go off at a minute and 50.
Okay. So, Misty Wittenberg. So just wanted to remind council that last year we were considering cuts to social services, community health, and other programs to children, seniors, and other vulnerable populations. That was to balance our deficit, which is not resolved. It's increasing. So how could the city even put this list of cuts forward with any good conscience, knowing that we had just added millions upon millions of dollars to this project's capital cost and scope based on requests by donors? One donor, this is a single donor, requested a weight room, training station, offices for donor staff. I've gotten into this particular donor. Comes with a whole lot of perks. For five annual installments of $100,000 that can be canceled anytime with six months' notice, in an agreement that provides that donor exclusive first rights to extend at maximum fixed rates. Substantial other benefits I've talked about. Who did the cost analysis that say that that was better for us, that that provided us any sort of fiscal advantage on that project? Because it was worked into the project that's advancing now, that you don't even get to vet, or say no to, or face serious ramifications, like the fact that we pre-ordered a Zamboni. So unless that Zamboni is providing social services, I think we can go ahead and cut out that argument. This is the same thing that happened with the third turf field, or having turf fields at all. The costs escalated substantially, particularly with the stormwater detention issues. All of these, the project's aggressive timeline, have been driven exclusively by donor and corporate interests, and those of a handful of project proponents. None of these have been by general public interest. We've showed a lot of concerns about the turf fields. Environmental, health, safety, the fact that every eight to 10 years we have to pay to replace it, dispose of it, throwing 200,000 square feet of turf and landfill, or infill into landfills. So, just to wrap up quickly, the advisement that was provided to you did not encompass the breadth of contractual options we have available to us. It did not represent public interest. And so I would like to know here, who here tonight is going to be advising you on these public interests? And if that answers no one, then I would respectfully request that we be allowed to engage and represent those interests. Not me specifically, not friends, anyone who wants to participate, especially when things are being presented as factual that are absolutely demonstrably incorrect.
Thank you, Misty. All right. We've got Tricia Conley, Doreen Price, then James Engelmann.
Good evening. My name is Tricia Conley. First thing is, I don't think anybody in this room would disagree that this is a fine project, but I think if we look at the numbers, we got a real thing we need to sit down and discuss. Who's paying for this? What kind of agreements are there on this? We don't know. Do any of you know? We haven't seen anything. And if it's on us to pay for it, we should know. And I hope that all of you get really well-informed before you decide to vote yes on another $18 million bond tonight. There's great things about Robert Crown. Yes, they have a wonderful community component. I'm a librarian. I love libraries. That's great. That is just a miniscule part of what's going on here. Please, step back, take a breath. You don't need to do this tonight. Get all the facts, and let the public see what's going on. We feel like we're in the dark. We can't get anything. You saw the redacted stuff. We don't know what the LOIs are. What's going on here? This doesn't look good. Thank you. Please vote no.
Thank you. Doreen Price, then James Engelmann, then Jack Crane.
I continue to support what Robin, this Doreen Price, what Robin Ruth Simmons said about this proposal, and the money's not available, or being less available, to help social issues, including people staying in their homes and aging in place, which is a goal, has been a goal, has been an issue since 2009 for people in the 5th ward, continues and affects people like me in 2019. In terms of remedies, the remedies aren't sufficient, and the zone and Rainey said that it wouldn't happen again. It would happen again in my condition, where it's clearly pointed out that the area is saturated, where it hadn't presented a problem except for remediation efforts that had to be made for some seepage that I got, which was unusual, since I had no water since 2006 with all the floods. Since then, the only incident of flooding was a broken pipe, and it was observed by Mark McIntosh, a very good employee, and I hope comes back to my house to see the damage done. And also, I invite the chief, and the chief of police, and the chief of fire, because this is exactly worse than what you see in a fire, except you don't see the outside crumbling, but you see the inside crumbling from the inside out because of no remediation soon enough with regard to just a pump. A pump is what, $10,000? And you could save more homes than mine, and prevent all the problems that I got afterwards. It's huge. Insurance doesn't cover. You fight, fight, fight. The city needs to cover these smaller homes, which is mine. 1,500 square feet is smaller than most people's homes that I've talked to. And it's got a lower level that I want to rent out. I've been trying to get this done for the past two years. Money's not sufficient. If I'm just the tip of the iceberg, there's so many people that need the money. Beyond the 5th ward, I can, I just pick somebody. Start helping people now, because water's an issue. That can be remedied cheaper, just like your new elevator. You found new was cheaper. Now, new is more expensive, and not doing upgrades is more expensive, because then you have to keep doing things that Ann Rainey says doesn't happen with regard to climate change. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Doreen. James. We've got James Engelmann, Jack Crave, then John Berkeley.
Hello. Hello. My name is James Engelmann from the 5th ward. Couple of weeks ago, I was here, and I was noticing the kids here. And I was just thinking, and you guys were talking, they were trying to say something about family focus. And I was thinking, if they're going to sell the building, why can't the kids, you bring, take the kids to the Harry Davis, no, excuse me, Harry Clark mansion, transfer them there? And remember, I have another, remember this, mine is a terrible thing to waste. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Jack Crane, John Berkeley, then Michael Peterson.
Good evening. I'm Jack Crane, 40-year Evanston resident. I'm here to talk about soccer, and the need for turf fields. And I'm very excited about Robert Crown and what's happening there. My grandsons, Isaac and Lee, who are Isaac and Lee Muir, 7th grader, freshman at ETHS, they've been practically living at Robert Crown at a little tiny corner there, where there's a little bit of soccer. You've got little walls there. It's a little street soccer. And it goes till well into the night. There's like one light bulb there. On summer nights, you'll see, you know, 20, 30 kids trying to get into that little field to play some soccer. The cool thing about that is it's built a community unto itself, community, the kind of community we are here in Evanston. It's Hispanic. It's black. It's white. It's where the kids show up to play a little soccer. One of the things I really like about this particular development is the central location of Robert Crown. Right now, if you play soccer and you want to get together with your friends, Robert Crown is far to the south, so your north side friends, it's pretty tough to get there. If you're going to do it at Lovelace, you know, the south Evanston kids, pretty tough to get out there. And we're not even talking about the condition of the fields in general, but I think this particular location can really build a community. And that's what I see when you put the turf fields out there. The beauty of soccer is that all you need is a ball, and a bunch of kids, girls, boys, to show up. In fact, you don't need a ball yourself. You just need one kid who can afford a ball, and they can show up at the field. And I think it can be a great place for just long-term sense of community for our kids. I think it will be a great asset to Evanston. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Let's see. We've got John Berkeley, Michael Peterson, then Claire Kelly.
Good evening. My name's John Berkeley. I'm a longtime Evanston resident, and I've raised four kids here. I'm here tonight, not representing just myself and my family, but the AYSO Soccer Organization and the Evanston Soccer Association. And we represent over 1,500 Evanston youth that play soccer across all Evanston public fields, and their parents. And we are here in support of voting yes tonight on the Robert Crown bond. We're also here to thank you. We're here to thank you so far for your votes up to this point, supporting the Robert Crown, the new Robert Crown, and the investment it will make in our community's future and our children's future. As all the studies show, having great community centers where the youth can go after school and participate in activities helps them in school and helps them in life. And that's what the new Robert Crown will bring. We're also here to thank you for all the community engagement that the city workers have done in helping prepare and design and get to this point with Robert Crown. I personally have attended over a dozen public meetings. I've attended stakeholder groups, and this was starting back in quarter one, 2017. So there's been lots of opportunity for the community to give their feedback. In addition, I'm here to thank you for your fiscal responsibility, ensuring that this is a public-private partnership, and that over 25% of it we paid for from private funds. That's fantastic. It's exceptional. It's not done all the time, and it's great that we've done that. So with all that, I'd like to say, for the 1,500 youth soccer players, please support the bond to continue the construction of the new Robert Crown. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Excuse me, John. We've got Michael Peterson, then Claire Kelly, then Matthew Tobin.
Hello. I'm Mike Peterson. I'm a 20-year resident, almost 20-year resident of Evanston. I've got two daughters, currently at ETHS, a junior and a sophomore, who play soccer and lacrosse. I think when you look across this area, you see from the south side to way out west in Oak Park, to as far north as Waukegan, communities that have thriving outdoor fields that can be run more often, or more of the year, because they simply have made a commitment to putting turf fields in their community. It allows the kids to start earlier. It allows them to play through inclement weather, and it's a huge advantage. As you know, in Evanston, as far as public fields, we have none. We have no turf fields, which puts us at a very big disadvantage. For example, girl soccer team, varsity team, starts their season on March 1. They are required to start playing soccer on basketball courts in street shoes, running shoes. There's potential to get injured. They just don't have the facilities to be using these turf fields. There's not enough time at ETHS, and there's a pecking order there, as you all know. Every rain day costs our kids valuable touches on the ball, whether that's lacrosse, whether that's soccer, whether that's field hockey. These kids just don't have the advantages that some other communities that have these turf fields have. Furthermore, the biggest advantage to what's been proposed at Robert Crown is that it's lighted. We don't have lighted fields. My kids have been involved in AYSO soccer, and Team Evanston, 11 United, Chicago Fire Juniors, since they were young kids. And they simply don't have the facilities there. They, in order to play at night, they've had to play on baseball fields. And I just don't think that that's proper. So I just ask for your support in this measure, and appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Claire Kelly, and then Matthew Tobin, and then Ben Shapiro.
Claire Kelly. So our city is currently struggling with a $7 million deficit right now. And to boot, we've issued already the first tranche, the first $25 million tranche. We still do not have a plan to pay for that over the next 25 years. There's no plan that's been presented to the public. Even Mayor Haggerty expressed a concern about this at his town hall meeting. There's no plan to pay for the first tranche, and we're talking about issuing yet another enormous deficit, another enormous debt of $18 million. We need to have a plan in place of how we're going to pay for this, and the public needs to know how we intend to pay for this. And regarding all the meetings, we went through every single public meeting that was held, every single one, all the minutes, all the notes, and not a single time was the public presented with the plan to pay for this project, not once. And I want to make it clear that it was in January, just January of last year, this was going to be a $30 million project. And it was in May, when it was officially presented as a $54 million project. And only about six weeks later then did we go forward and issue $50 million. We only had about six weeks between when it was officially presented as a new $54 million project, to when the bond was issued, a $50 million bond vote was taken up here at the dais. And we still don't have these LOIs. And we discussed this with the city manager's office, and the city assistant city manager agreed to go forward and to go to the table again with these private entities who will be using the gyms and the ice rinks as their home rinks and gyms, to negotiate a fair-paying deal, so that they're paying their fair share of this space. That will impact the amount of debt. We should wait until those LOIs have been negotiated, so that we really know how much is coming forward. Maybe we don't need $18 million if we're really negotiating well with these entities. And I just want to also just mention, with regard to the funds, the private funds, again, I've brought this to your attention before, we paid nearly $1 million for a private fundraiser for the city. The city paid $1 million, and nobody can tell us. All they can say is, "We think we gave it all to friends," when we didn't even have an MOU with them. So why did this money, that our CCS fundraiser, for which we paid almost $1 million, not go into the city coffer, but instead, we wrote checks over to Friends of Robert Crown? So we need to be clear and come clean with the city about where this money that people are now coming forward with, some of it perhaps, but we just only until last week, we did not have any agreement with them at all.
Thank you, Claire.
So I hope you will please not move forward, or request that we get a plan to pay for this, that the public can be aware of, and that you can be aware of too, before you issue any more enormous debt on the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got Matthew Tobin, Ben Shapiro, then Ray Friedman. We've got Matthew Tobin, Ben Shapiro, then Ray Friedman.
Good evening, City Council, my name is Matthew Tobin. I'm a lifelong Evanston resident. I have three children, ages 12 through 19. And as a board member of Evanston Soccer Association, I've been working with the Evanston Parks and Rec and Public Works Departments for about 10-plus years, and I'm here in support of the Robert Crown Community Center, and specifically the turf soccer fields, lacrosse fields, field hockey fields, football fields that are going to be built there. Turf fields are a huge asset for this community, will be a huge asset for this community. Grass fields aren't free. I know that it seems like the maintenance for turf is going to be excessive. It will not. The grass fields require consistent, ongoing maintenance by the city's wonderful Parks and Recreation Team. Their field maintenance crews are out there all winter, all spring, all fall, working on the fields, making them ready for the community, kids, adults alike, being out there playing all the sports and activities they love. The cost of the maintenance is extensive, year after year. Yes, turf requires some updating, but the ongoing maintenance of the grass fields is excessive. It requires fields to be rested for season after season, and often requiring all the local youth sports organizations to rest those fields and have to modify their schedules. So to have turf fields in our community for all the players to be able to use, not only in inclement weather, but without having games or practices canceled because of inclement weather, or fields that are unplayable in terrible conditions, will be a huge asset for our community. And I thank you for your support thus far, and for continuing your support, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Ben Shapiro, Ray Friedman, Diane Thodas.
Good evening, Ben Shapiro, current president of the Evanston Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm here tonight to thank you for including the library in the Robert Crown Community Project. This will give us, the library, an opportunity to reach and have in place physically on the ground, to reach a part of the community that we have been absent from for many, many years. It also puts the library facility directly on the flyway between South Evanston and the high school. It puts us close to Dawes School, to Shute, to Washington, et cetera. This will give us a great opportunity to do things we have not been able to do, or people we have not been able to reach, from the main branch or CAMHS, and certainly not from the north branch. We have budgeted for the build out of the space, and that is our commitment to this. We've also budgeted for increased staffing to be able to handle this, and we're examining our hours at this time. But I want to emphatically assure you that we see this as a great opportunity, not just for the library, but the community as a whole, for us to do things for everyone who lives in Evanston or visits, and to contribute, as one alderman mentioned to me, the wellness of this city. We have found, over time, that we have expanded our services into the social area. We have a social worker on staff now, full-time. We will be having sessions there, so that we can reach out to people who need services that are not traditional to libraries, but that we have found and have proven to be very, very important for this community. So again, we are looking forward to working with the city and helping to meet the needs of the community. We are pleased to be able to be part of this community center, and we are extremely pleased and thrilled to be able to work in a part of the community that we have not physically been in for way too long. So again, thank you, and I encourage you to vote yes on the bonds.
Thank you, thank you, Ben. We've got Ray Friedman, Diane Thodas, then Meg Welch.
Good evening, Ray Friedman, Second Ward. As I have been coming to your meetings for over two years now, I see a push for City Council to change public comment, to shorten public comments and address civility. People all have their own way of delivering a message, and shouldn't we be focusing on the message rather than the delivery? Instead of spending hours and hours discussing decorum, maybe we can instead address questions and issues that arise from public comment. Yes, I have seen frustration grow as issues are not addressed. What is the purpose and intent of City Council meetings, or the purpose and intent of a TEFRA hearing, or priority-based budget, or an appeal process for 16 units at Pittner and Dumpster? What was the measure of success or failure of these processes? Please take a look at these and explain to residents how these processes work or didn't work. I wanted to address SP 3 last week, saying that I have been to three separate goals meetings for 2019-20, and you have chosen six categories to examine. The number-one goal, chosen by seven out of nine aldermen, is to stabilize long-term city finances. I've not heard any discussion yet on how you plan to achieve that goal. Where all of your goals are important, and creating a data report to measure performance of these goals is a great idea. I cannot understand why your number-one goal has not been addressed yet. When were you planning on this discussion? Please do not approve any further bonds until we have had this discussion. As the saying goes, when we fail to plan, we plan to fail. As we've heard for several years now, towards the end of the year, we have a budget crisis. Please don't allow this to happen again. Please don't add to the anxiety and frustration we are already feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ray. We've got Diane Thodas, Meg Welch, then Darlene Cannon.
Hello, I'm Diane Thodas from Ward Seven. And I'm here because in 2018, Alderman Cecily Fleming gave a speech at the Grace Lutheran Church in Evanston as a kickoff for the Poor People's Campaign, and here's a segment of her speech from a video from Dear Evanston. My personal question here is that I can work with the campaign to move the agenda of injustice here in Evanston, down in Springfield, but then also I can just help us to get past the point of this balance that we have by ourselves. Yes, and one month later, you gave a very passionate and powerful speech at the State Capitol Building in Illinois Springfield, on behalf of the Poor People's Campaign, demanding equity for racial minorities and the underprivileged. Hearing your speech last year was a strong factor that decided me to become part of the Poor People's Campaign, to work for social and economic justice here in Evanston. I felt supported by your spirit with which, the spirit with which you spoke these words, which is why I am here today to follow through. It is my hope that you will consider the importance of voting against this $18 million bond issue, which we know will adversely affect the most vulnerable citizens in your ward and in the whole city. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, thank you. We've got Meg Welch, then Darlene Cannon, then Mike Shama.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge all the wonderful things that are planned for Robert Crown Center, and acknowledge that there are going to be great services there based on this plan, and the library is wonderful. However, we really think that it could be possibly done for less than $54 million. We'd like an opportunity to show you plans in other cities. You will be very startled, I think, to see what a nice center you could get. So what we're looking at is $1.5 million per year now for the debt service, that there's no plan to pay for, $3 million per year in the future, and no homeless shelter for families, no fund for seniors who can't pay their increased garbage collection fee, no fund for working parent, for a working parent who has to cut corners on food, and yes, this happens, so they can pay their zoned parking fee, getting a payday loan to get the boot removed you got, because you couldn't pay those parking tickets, and can't afford money for ASO. And I understand that there's first-come, first-served financial aid, but doesn't that imply it runs out? And also, there are working parents, even with a reduced fee, who can't afford AYSO. I could not afford AYSO 10 years ago for my child. She did not play soccer. So because your rent was raised, so we can, due to increased property taxes, so we can pay the Robert Crown debt, you can't afford figure-stating costumes or hockey lessons because you're paying for after-school care. And these people aren't here tonight because they couldn't pay a sitter. They're taking a night class or working their third job. This is what drives people from cities, even cities that have city staff give equity reports. So you threaten our ability to address any of these needs in the future if you vote to place these bonds tonight. We have used less than half of the last bond fund. Just wait. Tell us how you're going to pay for this, and let's have a conversation.
Thank you, Meg. We've got Darlene Cannon, come on up, Darlene, then we've got Mike Shama, and then Michael Bonaguru. And again, if you could just pronounce your name and give your name at the beginning. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Darlene Cannon. I agree that a new Robert Crown is needed. We just don't need to pay $53 million to do it. I don't agree with the means in which we're paying for it. And again, let's not act like Robert Crown is for all Evanston residents. It's being built for Northwestern University, Beacon Academy, and the wealthiest Evanston residents. They are the ones who will be able to afford to utilize this facility. However, it will be paid for on the backs of the city's most at-risk residents by tax increases and service fees, which disappropriately impacts blacks and brown people. We've paid Bullion Andrews less than half of the first bond issued to the state, so there's no hurry to issue this bond. The decision to raise taxes based on accepting the Robert Crown municipal bond has an immediate and concrete impact on the cost of housing, rent, and social services for all residents, especially the poor. You have a moral obligation to serve all the citizens in Evanston and not exclusively the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Darlene. We've got Mike Shama, and then Michael Bonaguru.
Good evening, City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mido Shama, and I live in the Fourth Ward. I'm a two-year-long resident of Evanston, and we moved here because of the opportunities for kids. I'm here to speak specifically about the Early Childhood Center at Robert Crown. It's a very affordable option. You talk a lot about, one of your goals is to expand affordable housing. Affordable housing is not complete without affordable living. You gotta buy a house, but if you can't afford to live here and raise a family, it's gonna be very difficult. So right now, the Early Childhood Center has no windows. The staff is loving, it's nurturing, the kids love it. It's very affordable. One of the things that kind of struck me is that when we had the polar vortex last January, they gave us a credit for the two days they missed. I don't know of any childhood center in the North Shore that does that, so thank you for the city for offering that option. So just to reiterate your goals, there are a lot of people who talked about goals here. First one is invest in city infrastructure, this is an investment. Enhance community development and job creation, I mean, this is it. Expand affordable housing. I talked how that's linked to the Robert Crown by offering opportunities to give kids something to do other than playing Fortnite. And then the other two, I'm not sure, you know, maybe ensuring equity in all city operations is kind of difficult to achieve, but one thing is, the childhood center is very diverse. It has kids from all of Evanston, and it's not full yet, so probably if we enhance it, there'll be more people in it. I just really like the staff there. And finally, stabilizing long-term city finances. This takes a long conversation, and thanks for people who are, you know, watching the city's money, and we need acquisition from everyone. So in short, I urge you to support the new Robert Crown, and thank you again for giving me the opportunity. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you, Michael. And then we've got Michael Bonaguru.
Good evening, my name is Mike Bonaguru, and I'm a resident of Evanston, as well as an attorney here in Evanston. And this evening, I'm here not only for myself, but I'm here for Dilshad and Minha's, Lakima, who are proprietors of the Shell Station at 2494 Oakton. And we're asking that you say no to the 2425 car wash on Oakton Avenue. One of the greatest assets to the city of Evanston is what has been brought up in different avenues this evening, but is the parks, and particularly James Park. At James Park, there's over nine baseball fields, there's tennis courts, there is the Levy Center. And throughout at least seven, eight months of the year, those parks and those facilities, at the park, rather, are going 16 hours a day. They're starting at 8:00, 9:00 in the morning, and they're going till 10:00 at night, whenever the lights turn off. One of the greatest things here in Evanston is the preservation of the parks for the children. And why am I bringing all of this up? Because the ingress and egress into James Park is becoming more and more of an island, as opposed to a facility, a park that is accessible, and a car wash that has already been trimmed down to a right-in, right-out of the gas station, or, I'm sorry, of the station, will greatly reduce the ingress and egress that is bottlenecked down to a single lane on Oakton Avenue. The other part of this is the commerce issue. There's a gas station across the street, there's a subway across the street. The gas station already accommodates and has a gas station as well as a car wash in it. From that car wash, 4% of every dollar that's being spent at the car wash is provided to the city of Evanston. So in other words, when you go in and you get your gas, 4% of every dollar spent on the gas, to then be able to use the car wash, goes to the city of Evanston. A car wash across the street is unable to provide a single dollar or benefit to the city of Evanston, because there are no tax revenues that come from a service car wash facility. So again, we would ask that you would preserve the natural resources of the city of Evanston, one of its greatest resources for every child, thousands and thousands. And the last comment I want to make is that the, I want you to please look at the traffic report that was attached to the initial application. It's from 2017. Mike, I produced one from 2018 from the dome across the street that was more updated than the one that was in the application submitted for the gas station. And I really request that you look at that, because this bottleneck is going to completely hamper an area of great resource for the city of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. Thank you, is there an issue?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick announcement that I forgot to make during clerk announcements.
Can I have you make it at the end, when we do call roll call?
Fair to make it now, our folks are still around. It's related to the financial disclosure and affiliation statements. They're due for all members of the dais, as well as folks out there who serve on boards, committees, and commissions. You received an email from the clerk's office for your financial disclosure and affiliation statements. Once you complete the online form, you'll just have to stop into the clerk's office to have that form notarized. So as a reminder to folks on the dais and folks out in the audience who pay attention, because I know a lot of folks disappear once public comment's over, so I wanted to catch you right here.
Thank you. And it's due by May 1st, correct?
Yes.
For everybody, just so everybody knows, those financial disclosure forms. I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking passionately about a variety of issues with different points of view, and you'll see some of that same play out here up at the dais. So thank you, everybody. We're going to now turn to the agenda. The first item of business, we're going to go onto the consent agenda. Alderman suffered, and if you could take us through M1, and then through APW.
Sure. So item M1 is approval of minutes of the regular city council meetings of March 11th, 2019, March 18th, 2019, and April 1, and April 8th of 2019. They are for action. From the Administration of Public Works Committee, item A1 is payroll, March 18th, 2019, through March 31st, 2019, in the amount of $2,623,071.86. The bills list for April 23rd, 2019 is $5,788,823.06. Item A3 is a contract with StanTech Consulting Services for the 1909 raw water intake replacement. Item A4 is a contract with Summit Construction Company for the 2019 50/50 sidewalk replacement project. Item A5 is a change order, number five, to contract with CDM Smith for engineering services for the treated water storage replacement project engineering services. A6 is a contract extension with Antira Inc. A6 is a contract extension with Antira Inc. for material testing services. A7, purchase of trees for spring planting. A8, contract with Horror Landscape and Snow Removal Inc. for 2019 planting services. A9 is the purchase of five Plate Scout license recognition systems for passport labs. A10 is amendment to agreement for crossing guard services with Andy Frain Services, Inc. to add one additional crossing guard. A11 is the 2018 year-end financial report. A12, I'm sorry, A11, 2018 year-end financial report. A12, Resolution 34R19 to increase the total fiscal year 2018 budget by $18,641,429 to a new total of $354,110,437. A13 is Resolution 42R19 authorizing the city manager to execute a seven-year cable television franchise agreement with Comcast. A14 is Resolution 19R19, intergovernmental agreement for reciprocal reporting and school resource officer with ETHS. A15 is Resolution 37R19, professional services agreement with Kane McKenna for tax increment financing consulting services. A16, Ordinance 2309, 019, amending City Code Section 1081, license required, changing the wheel tax deadline. That's for introduction. A17 is Ordinance 16019, amending portions of City Code Title VII, Public Ways, Chapter 2, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Ways, Section 9, Incumbrances, Encroachments, and Obstructions. A18 is Ordinance 17019, amending portions of the City Code Title 8, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 4, Municipal Solid Waste, Section 8, Designation of Collection Site Collection Agent. This is for introduction. A19, okay, there's a question on A18, so that is, oh, sorry, A19 is off, please. A20 has been amended, and so why don't we pull it off and make sure that we get the amendment recorded. A21 is amending a definition within Title 4, Chapter 20, that addresses the frequency of heavy precipitation events based on recent Illinois State Water Survey. This is for introduction. A22 has been taken off. A23 is Ordinance 27019, authorizing the 2019 A and B general obligation bonds.
I'd like to remove that one.
Okay. A24, Ordinance 28019, to approve the construction of local improvement known as Evanston Special Assessment Number 1524 for action. A25, Ordinance 29019, updating the City Code Section 104162A, vehicle parking permits. And that's it.
Thank you, Alderman Suffertin. And Alderman Ravel, could you take us through planning and development?
Sure. So item P1 did not pass out of committee. Item P2, Ordinance 32-0-19, granting a special use and zoning relief for an automobile service station and convenience store at 140 Chicago Avenue. Alderman Rainey has requested suspension of the rules for introduction and action at our meeting tonight. Item P3, Ordinance 18-0-19, amending City Code Section 6-15-14-7, active ground floor uses. This is to revise the listing of appropriate ground floor uses in the Central Street overlay district. This is for action. And item P4.
Would you take that off, please, P4?
P4, okay, P4 is off.
And thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Ruth Simmons, could you take us to Human Services Committee?
Yes, thank you. Oh, one, the Human Services Committee recommends city council approval to provide financial assistance through the LEP program, workforce reserve penalty account totaling $40,000 to Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse and Minority Business Consortium. Funding will be from the LEP workforce reserve. Penalty amount will be available, fund balance of $71,871.59. This is, yes.
This is for action. Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you please take the roll?
On the consent agenda, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Suffertin, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk. Read the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine-to-zero vote. Alderman Suffertin, can you take us to A19?
Sure. Item A19 is Ordinance 39019, amending portions of City Code Title VII, Public Ways, Chapter 15, Board of Local Improvements. Staff recommends city council adoption of Ordinance 39019 by which the city council would amend Title VII, Chapter 15, Section 7 of the City Code related to the special assessment procedures for alley improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion. Alderman Ravel?
Yes, I had a question. It's paragraph C at the bottom of page 299. And it says, so this pertains to how we would assess the 50%, or the portion that residents would pay for the alley improvement. It starts out by saying, "Assessment costs attributable to each property owner is based on the unit cost method unless a more equitable alternative method is appropriate." And then the new language would be, "Votes by the property owners shall be weighted by the value of the assessment costs attributable to their property." So I'm just, I would like somebody to explain that to me.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty. Alderman, Dave Stomec, Public Works Director. We generally assess the special assessment by the unit method, but there are cases sometimes where we'll do it by the lineal foot or by the area method. And that occurs for like an alley by Central Street where half the business, half the properties would be businesses and the other would be single-family homes potentially. And we might switch to where it's a lineal foot method rather than by units because it's hard to determine the units on a commercial property. Therefore, and commercial property might have a much longer property line along the alley and therefore they would have more of a vote than a residential home that has smaller portion of it. So that's what that last line is about.
Okay. Because it sounded to me as though it was almost as though if I have a really expensive house with a big assessment, I would pay more than someone with a less expensive house.
No, it's based on the factor of how we're determining how the costs are divided. Either by the unit, so if you have two-unit property, you would have two votes to, most single-family homes only have one unit. But when we switch to a different method and it goes to lineal foot, then if somebody's budding the alley and it's 100 feet wide, where a commercial property might be 300 feet wide, then the commercial property would get three votes and the property only has 100 feet, would get one vote.
Right. No, I mean, that makes sense, it's just not how I would read that sentence, but...
Okay. That's the intent.
Okay.
And I would turn to the attorney to determine if it should be modified.
I mean, if we're saying linear foot, why don't we say linear foot or something?
Because we want this, it could be by unit, by lineal foot, or by area. Sometimes you go also by lineal foot and then the depth of the property as well. So there are three different scenarios that are used on occasion under the special assessment process.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no more lights. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please, on A19, Ordinance 39-0-19, amending portions of the City Code Title VII, Public Ways, Chapter 15, Board of Local Improvements. This is for, and just so everyone knows, this is for introduction.
Yes. Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Suffertin, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
All right, A19, Ordinance 39-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council for introduction, nine-to-zero. Alderman Suffertin, could you take us to A20?
Sure. Item A20 is Ordinance 43019, adding regulations to the City Code to address erosion and sediment controls for construction sites. Staff recommends the adoption of proposed Ordinance 43019 by which city council would add Chapter 23, Erosion and Sediment Controls on Construction Sites to Title 4, Building Regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Take it.
Okay. Alderman Suffertin?
Sure. I just want to note that there was an amendment. The ordinance stated 27019 and it was amended to correctly state, "Ordinance 43019."
So the correct ordinance number is 43019. Correct city attorney as well. Okay. All right. Thank you, Alderman Suffertin. Seeing no more discussion, the city clerk could you take the roll? This is on A20, Ordinance 43, that's the correction, 43-0-19, adding regulations to the City Code to address erosion and sediment controls for construction sites.
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Suffertin, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Great, thank you. A20, Ordinance 43-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine-to-zero vote. Alderman Suffertin, can you take us to A22?
A22 is Resolution 44R19, amending the city of Evanston budget policy. Staff recommends city council adoption of Resolution 44R19, amending the city of Evanston budget policy to state that tax-supported general obligation debt shall not exceed $160 million in aggregate principal amount.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. City Manager, could you clarify what this means?
Good evening, Mayor and the members of the city council. So last two weeks back, the city council adopted to have the debt limit pushed back to 152 from 162. This is just a matter of kind of an interpretation. Does it mean that our debt has gone up? Any changes to what we are issuing in the bonds? No, absolutely not. And I think it would have a better thing if you see on the page 314 where we say that what is the unabated principal as of 1119, which is around 134 millions. And then we added the 2019 A and B bonds, unabated portion of 22 million. So it comes to 157 million. And then we have subtracted, in December 1st, we will make the principal payment of roughly $7.2 million to get to at around 150 million. So we looked at that number as of December 31st, 150 million, and we thought that, okay, 152 million would be fine. Upon further discussion and based on the opinion from our bond counsel, Chapman Cutler and Sharon Levy from Chapman Cutler is here. She said that you have to look at the limit the day of you issue the bond. That means when we issue the bonds in May and it would close in June, we would have 157 million outstanding technically as of that date until we hit the December 1st when we make the $7 million principal payment. So based on their opinion, we are requesting the city council to move the limit back to 168 million. But this does not affect any bond issuance principal amount or the debt amount in any way.
Right. So this really is simply something so that we won't get in trouble when we go to the market.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. So being responsible and not in any way damaging our credit rating, is there a document that states that? Because the council gave recommendation at 152 in the last meeting. Do we have a document that holds us to that firm?
I mean, we have the, like a letter from our bond counsel that based on the numbers and you would be at 157 million, we recommend it to be 160. And recommend means that, particularly, yeah, when we talk to the rating agency or outside market, yeah, they would look at the number as of that date. So that's why the bond counsel recommended to have 160 million, any number higher than 157 million. So that's why we proposed the 160 million debt limit. And again, I mean, I think we will come back to you in December and bring the debt limit back to 152 million because on December 1st, we would be making a principal payment of $7.2 million. So if the city council chooses to do so, we can bring that debt limit back to 152 million in December.
So can the representatives speak to what the consequences would be, could be, that they're advising us to go to the 160?
I mean, I can help you all here.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Levy. I'm an attorney with Chapman and Cutler. Hattash asked me to come today to answer questions.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Thought I was. Can you hear me now? Okay. To answer your question, Alderman, what will happen if you don't raise the debt limit to above the 157 million? Then you will only be allowed to issue up to the 157 million. And as of the numbers that we were presented with by the city and its financial advisor, that number was higher. Excuse me, it was up to the 157, not the 152. So we will not issue our approving bond counsel opinion and allow you to issue the bonds. You can downsize the bond issuance, but in order to issue the full amount that is proposed, you would need to increase the debt limit.
Thank you.
And again, just to clarify, it's the city's debt limit. As a home rule entity, there's no state limit on the amount of debt you can issue, but the city council has adopted a budget policy that limits the amount of general obligation-backed tax, the debt that's paid from taxes.
So that would hold us at the 157?
You would have to double-check the numbers with, you know, I would defer to the finance department and the city council, or excuse me, the financial advisor for the actual numbers. But the original resolution that we looked at was to increase the debt limit to the 160 million, which we were comfortable with as bond counsel. And then it got changed to 152 million at the last meeting.
Thank you. Hattash, so could you help me understand what did we, what did council approve and direct you on the 152? So how are we back to the 157?
I mean, it's a matter of, so if you look at, I don't know whether you have this option, like, I mean, you have these things, open the page 314. It was interpretation where we took into the account the December 1st principal payment. So we reduced our amount by 7.2 million from 157 million. So we came to around 150 million. So we said, okay, we'll be comfortable with it. Upon further discussion and from the firm opinion from the bond counsel, she said, yeah, it would rather be 160 million if you want to issue the same amount of bonds. And so that's why we request you to have 160 million debt limit. This does not affect any bond issue. It's not going up, the debt is not going up. It's just a matter of, yeah, how we interpreted the last time and after we get the firm opinion from the bond counsel, we are proposing it to be 160 million.
Hattash, just so we all understand, so that payment of 7 million that we're gonna make at the end of the year, is that the funds that are coming in from the friends of Robert Crown?
No, no, no. That's, that's in general principal payment of, two words, I'm tired, not just Robert Crown.
Okay.
So we just reduced that payment, you know, by 7 million to say, okay, we'll be at 150 million as of December 31st. And that's why I thought, okay, we would be comfortable with 152 million.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more lights for discussion, we're gonna go ahead and have the city clerk take the roll. This is on A22, Resolution 44-R-19, amending the city of Evanston budget policy, increasing the debt, the general obligation debt shall not exceed 160 million in aggregate principal amount.
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
All right. A22, Resolution 44-R-19, amending the city of Evanston budget policy up to 160 million in aggregate principal amount for general obligation debt, passes the Evanston City Council on an eight-to-one vote with Alderman Ruth Simmons voting no. Alderman Suffertin, could you take us to A23?
Sure. Ordinance 27019, authorizing 2019 A and B general obligation bonds. Staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 27019, providing for the issuance of one or more series of not to exceed $18 million general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019 A, to finance the construction and equipment of a new Robert Crown Community Center, ICE Complex, and Library Center. And one or more series not to exceed $18 million general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019 B, for capital improvements of the city of Evanston, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing the execution of one or more bond orders in connection therewith, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of the principal and of the interest on said bonds, and authorizing and directing the sale of said bonds at public competitive sale. The ordinance is introduced at the city council meeting on April 8th, 2019. The final terms of the bonds will be approved by the designated officers under the ordinance after the bond sale, which is scheduled for May 16th, 2019. By completion of the bond order as authorized by the bond ordinance, staff plans to return to the city council at its December 9th, 2019 city council meeting with additional amendments to the budget policy, reducing the debt limit back to 152 million and ad language indicating that this is the limit measured with outstanding indebtedness annually on December 31st.
And this is for action. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, open for conversation. Alderman Fleming?
I guess I just wanted to speak to some of the community concern, because I think there's been a lot of concern. So I, you know, I think, I was, I missed one meeting last year when we were talking So I, you know, I think we, I was, I missed one meeting last year when we were talking about bonds and funding this, and I, you know, voiced concern about how do you pay for things, right? I don't, I don't love living off of credit and so on and so forth. And so I, I did what I understood to be the correct math. I sat with whoever we had at CFO, maybe it was Hitesh. But anyway, I came to realize that although, you know, I don't love necessarily bonding, we, we don't have a huge revenue source. And at that time, I had seen kind of the wave of public opposition to us raising funds in terms of developments or, you know, using land that we have for developments that people, people didn't want that, right? People didn't want to sell to Harley Clark and these things. And, and we're a municipality, so we are not, we don't have a lot of ways to generate funds. It's just the bottom line of being a city. We don't, we just don't, aside from property taxes and, and watching this council, you know, kind of figure out how to do that in the best way. And I think no one, in hindsight, liked the budget process from last year. It was quite disastrous. But we also have to be honest and that we don't have a lot of ways to raise money, right? So that the citizens voted 89% or whatever it was to raise property taxes quite a bit for the schools, and that's a commitment by our city, which, you know, whether you voted yes or no to it, people voted for that. So we, we did not want to raise property taxes. I'm trying to speak, but I can just give my vote. I'm trying to be respectful and, and explain my position. You don't have to agree with it, but I think I'm trying to give it. So I would, I would appreciate not to have the mumble, you don't have to agree, that's fine. But anyway, long story short, so we don't have a lot of ways to raise money. We need a new Crown Center, we need a lot of new improvements. If you look at this, we're looking at almost $18 million for all other kind of stuff in the city that I would love for us to be able to write a check for, but we don't have the ability. So I appreciate and I, and I understand your concern about the LOIs. I also would like to see some more of the LOIs. I'm under the impression that the larger ones have already come forward and we've seen them. I, you know, have to essentially make the best decision that I think. So while I don't love the bonding, I also don't love the people in South Evanston don't necessarily have access to the same facilities. I don't love that we have kids who, you know, there's no gym they can access, you cannot currently access the gym in the Robert Crown. I'm not a skater, I'm not a, you know, my kids don't play soccer and those things. I'm also concerned about people who live in this community who feel like they can't live in this community. I'm cognizant, however, that that's many reasons. And I know the city plays a role in that, but there are many taxing bodies in the City of Evanston, many. The city is probably one of the smaller ones. So while I appreciate your concern, I appreciate you thinking of the people who cannot afford to live in our city, I, I don't know, I guess that Robert Crown is the thing that we all need to be jumping on. I think there's some bigger conversations, and I do think this is part of that, and you can, you know, think that this is the only thing. But we're going to get to the point of budgeting, we're going to have potentially new developments, and we're going to have people who want us to save this and don't want us to do that. But we, we honestly have to really hunker down and make some tough decisions for the longevity of the city. And I, and I understand that Robert Crown is part of that, but I think there's also a bigger part. So when we have, you know, the potential development of whatever kind, you know, I think about the library parking lot, whether you like the design of the building or whatever, but it potentially could have been $4 million that we could have dumped into a payment of Robert Crown funding or the other $100 million that, you know, we have in debt for other projects that are long gone. So I just, I guess I would like us to have a more balanced conversation. And again, as a democracy, we can not like one thing and like another one, but I think if we're looking big picture, we're going to have to move past, you know, kind of not wanting this building or not wanting this thing or not wanting a house next to us or not wanting a park or whatever it is. Because all of those things that we don't look at as revenue sources, we all have to pay for. And I live here and I pay taxes here too, and I'm not looking to increase my own taxes either. You know, I have elderly relatives who live here who, who don't want to increase their taxes either. But just as we look at everything, right, the CTA has gone up, everything is going up. We live in a city where things are rising, but rates, incomes are not. So anyway, I digressed on that, but I wanted to essentially explain to you, I don't, I don't love it, but I also don't think it is the worst thing in the world. I think it will be a great service to our community once we have it, whether you ice skate or not. I think that the childcare is very much needed for us to have some other affordable childcare options. Again, I think the gym is great. I think it'll be a great space for our building and for our neighborhood. And yes, we will have to pay for it. And I think going through this project has helped me understand maybe some things we could have done a little better. We could have had maybe, you know, more community meetings that just focused on the funding aspect. We could have maybe asked Robert Crown Friends of Robert Crown to open up their meetings or I don't even know when they meet, but more people could have come with funding ideas to that. They, they were a community group who came together to say, we want to fundraise. And I don't think we've ever, I think the city manager talked about the Levy Center or the Levy family who came forward to fundraise. I applaud them fundraising. I wasn't going to go out and do that. Maybe there's ways we could have done that separately and had more conversations. But in order to get this building up, we do have to pay for it. And I'm not sure that all the fundraising in the world would have gotten us to even the $30 million it started at without us having to finance some of that or the majority of that. So anyhow, I'm going to support this. I understand people don't agree. I've had many ward meetings, I've had many citizens who have, you know, who would like to see a new Robert Crown. They don't necessarily say I want to see a higher tax bill, but they would like to see a Robert Crown. So for that reason, I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you. So this can be the end of the world for some families. I mean, I, I am going to be very hard and firm on anything that challenges affordability. I'm just not willing to compromise there. I do believe that there is somewhere in between a deteriorating building and $55 million. It's insulting to say that. It's insulting to be told that we have to do it this way or else there's going to be a lawsuit. There certainly are some other things that can be discussed, and I would like us to consider holding this so that we can discuss what our other options are. We have families, and I don't need to repeat it, you all get calls about folks that have to leave town. It's happening every day because they can't afford to stay here. We absolutely need to improve Crown, we need expanded affordable childcare, but we don't need to add to the expense of living here in Evanston. It's not fair. It's in complete contradiction to everything that we talk about most in terms of inclusion and affordability, and there is further discussion that we can have. And I'd just like to ask that we, I see that we have May 16th is the time that the bond sale happened. The residents have questions about transparency with the agreements between the donors and, and what we're committing to there. I'm just asking that we take another week to look into what our options are.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Ruth Simmons. All right, seeing, seeing no more lights, we're going to go ahead and take, take the roll. This is on 823, ordinance 27-0-19 authorizing 2019 A and B general obligation bonds. City clerk, please take the roll.
I'd like to make a motion.
I think we're in the process of taking the roll.
Yeah. I move that we hold this one week for a further community involvement.
Seeing no second, city clerk, can you take the roll?
I'll call the question.
Okay, is there a, okay.
Did you second that for discussion, Alderman?
Well, I have a question.
Well, you'd have to second it for discussion.
Okay, well, I second it.
Can we just get a clear, a ruling here, city attorney? We got to call the question.
Alderman Ruth Simmons made the motion to hold, and I didn't hear a second yet.
No, I didn't either.
I called the question.
Okay. And then subsequently, the question was called. You have to, you have to take a vote on to call the question.
All right.
Call the question on what?
So we're taking, on taking, on taking the vote.
On the original vote.
On the hold?
On the hold.
I didn't hear a second on the hold. Was there a second on the hold?
There wasn't a second, there was not a second on the hold.
I didn't second the hold before Alderman Wilson jumped in with the, no, say, call the question.
Okay, there was time. I paused, okay, so we're calling the question. We're just taking a vote now whether to call the question or whether we're going to have a continuing conversation. Okay, so city clerk, can you take the roll?
Point of information, the call, call the question is on the vote on the bond issuance?
Yes, it is, 823.
Just ask.
Yep. All right, city clerk, take the roll, please. This, this is on calling the question.
This is just on calling the question.
That's all.
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wen. Well, this is a vote, if he calls the question, I don't think that we're...
He called the question. We're not, we're not voting right now on 823. We're voting on whether they're calling the question, meaning we're going to bring 823 to a vote. Okay, so we got, okay.
So I say aye.
Keep going to Alderman Wilson.
Processually, Alderman Wilson called the question, and so now you have to take a vote on whether or not to call the question to then vote on the actual ordinance.
That's what we're doing right now.
Yep, all right, so call Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
No.
Alderman Suffertin.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
All right, so call the question passed on a five to four vote. So...
It's a motion.
Okay. So now we, now we, now we go ahead and vote on that. So city clerk, could you take the roll on...
Motion not a thing now?
Yeah, so it failed to, right now, we'll see how this vote goes, but that call, no, but the call, no, but that was, he called the question. He called the question to vote on 8, on 823. There was a five to four vote to go ahead and do that vote. So that's what we're going to do right now, is the vote on 823, ordinance 27-0-19 authorizing 2019 A and B general bond obligations. So call the, go ahead and take the roll, city clerk.
On the question, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Suffertin, Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
And Alderman Fleming.
No.
Okay, so 823, ordinance 27-0-19 authorizing 2019 A and B general obligation bonds passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Okay, Alderman Revelle, could you take us to P4?
We typically...
Okay. Item P4, ordinance 30-0-19 granting a special use permit for a planned development at 2425 Oakton. Plan commission and staff recommend adoption of this ordinance for approval of a planned development for a car wash facility with 20 vacuum spaces and four parking spaces in the industrial district and redevelopment overlay district. Applicant is seeking one-site development allowance for an accessory structure that is three feet from the principal structure where 10 feet is required. This is for action.
Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Rainey.
I understand this has support, but I wanted to express my concerns. This is in the ninth ward, my ward is across the street in the eighth ward. And I have two concerns, only two concerns. Number one, this is immediately, not down the street or around the corner, but this is face to face immediately across the street from a car wash. It is also immediately across the street from the driveway of, the driveway of a storage facility, of a car wash and a gas station that is very, very busy, and from the sports dome. And from Gordon Foods, which is not that busy. But the sports dome and the car wash are. I want to tell you, I know the traffic consultant, and we all know traffic consultants. There is never increased traffic as a result of a traffic consultant study. Never in the history of a traffic consultant study has there ever been increased traffic. However, I have personally, and I know that none of us appreciate hearing personal experiences for, for reference when there's a case study. However, I have personally been trapped in that gas station, coming out when there has been a sports dome activity letting out at the same time. And there is a traffic signal at that, at that exit. It's the most horrendous feeling when you are trapped in between four or five cars in a small space. I cannot imagine, and I know there's left turn or right turn only coming out of the new car wash, which has I don't know how many bays. It is, it is going to be a very unbelievable mess when this happens. And right down the street, of course, like two driveways away is Home Depot, which is going to be really interesting. But I, I think this is so unusual that anybody would want to use this space for a new car wash. It's, it's just so unusual that, that this would be placed there. It's face to face with another car wash. There's a car wash right down the street on Dodge at Dempster. There's a car wash right across the way on Dempster, a self-car wash, and another, another, I think it's another Specs car wash. It's just unbelievable. I don't know how many car washes we need. And I, I'm sure it's, there's going to be some cannibalization, but, you know, go for it. I, I just, I just can't see this working out in the long run. But I'm going to vote against it. I, I just can't imagine. And I'm certainly hoping, hoping that we'll have a lot of traffic control over there from our chief when things get really hairy, because it's, it's going to be bad.
Right. Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Good luck to...
Alderman Fleming, and then Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Yeah, so Alderman Rainey makes some points in that there is a lot of traffic on Oakton. We finally have gotten an Oakton traffic study budget, so that will happen in the fall, I believe. This is also the same street where, as you know, we have, we're in negotiations to sell the recycling center, which is going to bring more traffic because we hope that will be a thriving business.
Very low traffic.
Okay, I'm in a traffic study. So what I can say is these developers are working with a very difficult lot, which is why it's been empty for a very long time. Most people don't even know it's there. They have agreed to do right-hand turn in and only right-hand turn out as to not put more traffic going east on Oakton where we get to the, you know, it goes from the two lanes to the one lane. And there is some traffic back up from the Home Depot. I'm trying to work with them because people turn in by the stick and shake. But long, long story short, for this development, they have been very helpful. They have come to three or four ward meetings. They have worked with DAPR, they have passed all of the things we have sent to pass. And in terms of them being across from the other car wash, I mean, I can think of a gazillion coffee shops we have across from each other. I can think of, you know, all kind of businesses we have that are across from comparable businesses. And I don't think that that is something that we necessarily take into consideration when we rule for or against things. These gentlemen also have another business or some of them, there's partners within Evanston, and they've been fine business owners. So I applaud that they're working with a difficult location. It is not maybe going to, you know, ring the alarm for increases in our sales tax, but it will employ some folks, it will provide a service to our constituents who, who are looking for that. And again, it will get another property that has been off the tax rolls for years onto our tax rolls, generated for our economy. So I appreciate those who are supporting it, and I look forward to having a new business in our, in our ward.
One more second.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Ruth Simmons and Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. So I've never known us to be in the management in terms of like non-compete. So as Alderman Fleming said, you know, you can get a burger at McDonald's, Burger King, and like Philly something or another, all on, you know, corners. So I think that this business has complied with everything that we've asked. They've passed DAPR and everything else. They have exhausted the public process with community meetings. Ward Alderman is paying very close attention and certainly would want safety as a priority for the residents that she serves. So I am in strong support of this, and I'm asking that we all support it.
Well, Alderman Simmons, you...
Oh, yeah, you're up next, Alderman Rainey. Okay.
You ought to take a look at the zoning code and special uses, and you'll see that we do have compete and, you know, complex issues having to do with zoning. So anyway, these are very nice people, and I, they have done a great job in, in planning for this. I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, restaurants and bars and things like that, one of the things you can't do at a, at a car wash is you can't walk to the car wash. You got to drive your car. So that's my concern, is the, the automobile traffic and the, the face-to-face car washes. I mean, just... I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me from a business standpoint. So I'm talking about that. I'm not being snarky, so don't get snarky. I'm just saying it just doesn't make business sense to me, and I think it's going to be a traffic nightmare. And I said, those are my two issues.
So I think it's gonna be a very, very strange confluence of cars and business issues, so...
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Seeing no more lights, we're gonna go ahead and take the role. This is on P4, ordinance 30-0-19, granting a special use permit for a planned development at 2425 Oakton Street. City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Witten. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey. And Alderman Fleming.
Alright, P4 ordinance 30-0-19, granting a special use permit for a planned development at 2425 Oakton, passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to one vote. We're not gonna move to call the wards.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, we took a vote incorrectly there with the calling of the question, and I just want to, if we don't follow our rules, we potentially put the vote in jeopardy. When Alderman Wilson made the motion to call the question, our rules say that if our rules are silent, we follow Robert's rules of order. And in order to call the question, one, anyone who calls the question has to have the floor, and Alderman Wilson did not have the floor at the time. It also requires a second. I do not reme...
You seconded.
Okay, you seconded, and it also requires a two-thirds vote to end debate. And we did not meet the two-thirds majority in order to end debate. Thank you.
Alright, so let's hold for a second, and City Attorney, you've heard all that, is that particularly the two-thirds part?
He is correct.
That is correct. 18.9 requires a two-thirds vote. I apologize.
Okay, okay, so can, given if we've incorrectly then procedurally done something, can we go back to that item?
You should go back to that.
Okay, very good, very good. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna go back, this is going back to item A, A-23. Let me get my notes here. We're gonna go back to A-23, which is ordinance 27-0-19, authorizing 2019 A and B general obligation bonds. And we're gonna start this all over again from the beginning. I know we've had a whole conversation. Is there someone that would like to move this for discussion?
So, move approval.
Is there, is there a second? Okay, now it's open for discussion. Alderman Wilson?
I thought we discussed it all, there were no more lights, so I moved to call the question. So now that I have the floor, I would like to move to call the question.
Aren't we just gonna end up where we were before?
Yeah, we're gonna, we don't have two-thirds.
Given that we need a two-third, given that we need a two-thirds vote.
Okay, move approval. So I moved approval second, so what I...
Okay.
I wanna...
So now, is there any, we'll go with the way we always do. Alright, now it's open for a conversation. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
I move that we hold this one week for further community input.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
So we... Wait a second, so it's, it's done?
I moved over, will the hold over?
Say again?
I moved over, will the hold over?
I'm not gonna be here.
Can a hold be overruled? City Clerk?
It takes, so 18.12, if a request to hold the matters over is contested by a motion to overrule duly maiden, seconded, takes two-thirds of the Alderman present.
Overrule the hold.
Point of order, can I ask a question?
Yes, Alderman Rainey, sure.
Would we be holding this over to a special meeting? Or would we be holding this over to the 14th or 13th, whatever the next meeting is?
Because I don't think we have a meeting on the 29th, and we...
No, we do have a meeting on the 29th.
We have a special meeting on the 29th. I think it's a special meeting. I signed a document recently.
To affordable housing, is my understanding.
For affordable housing, yeah.
Special meeting.
And so, you know, am I still...
Yeah, you got the floor.
You know, I, truly, Alderman Fleming, actually, I think you very eloquently ended an excellent job in explaining it all. And this has been a, you know, like a nine to 10-year process, extensively vetted. The amount of information that's available is extremely extensive. We've had a lot of meetings. I had a meeting at the Crown Center. The information is all here, if, you know, and you don't even really need to FOIA most of it. Most of it, if you Google the city website, you know, you find all of this stuff there. So I just, you know, I don't understand or fathom why, and I see who talks, but, you know, in my community, I live in the fourth ward, but I live on Main Street, I live a couple blocks from the Crown Center. This is my neighborhood. I see who uses the facility. And Alderman Fleming, as you said, I don't understand why, you know, that, you know, if, we had, somebody made the point before I made it previously, you draw a line diagonally through the city, and the libraries are all on one side and not on the other side. And, you know, it's, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me. We talk about, you know, the money impact. You know, this is not the tax problem. This is not the pension deficit. This is not the cause of that. We are underserving a large number of people in our community, and finally, after a long period of time, we're gonna get to that. So I, you know, I implore and beg you all to support going forward with this. It's significantly built. You know, the idea that you can pause it or, you know, re-engineer things or any of that, we are running the risk of having to give back some or all of the money that's been raised. So imagine how awesome that would be. We've got a half-built building, and we return the money that was raised by the fundraising effort. That's pretty insane. So, you know, we're running all kinds of risks here, and, you know, how awesome is that gonna be for the people in the neighborhood to have unfinished sports fields and a fence up for two, three, four, five years? That is not moving our community forward. So we've vetted this for close to a decade. Please, let's move forward and, and get this priority for our community done. Over an extended period of time, Alderman Rainey, the people who've been here for a long time, we've worked very hard and diligently to bring the debt level down, because we knew this project was coming. I think 10, 12 years ago, the debt amount was something in the neighborhood of 195 million. We paid that down because we knew, as Alderman Fleming indicated, you don't have the ability to write a check for it. We knew that we were gonna need this capacity. We created the capacity so we can do what's right for the community. So I just, I hope that we can support this and move, continue forward.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fleming?
So I still stand behind everything I said, although I went kind of in a circle. My, my support here is that, you know, unless our bond council tells me otherwise, which they might even be gone home now, for us to, for us to have a meeting dedicated to just finance, I understand people are not gonna leave there necessarily happy or whatever, but we would have answered some questions that we don't get to answer here. We could, you know, have a more informal discussion about paying for it. And then we could come back, and we would have met that concern. Again, I don't think we're gonna necessarily change minds, we would have met that concern in that ask of us. I didn't go to all 35, whatever meetings we had. I did sit here and kind of peruse online and saw some, you know, PowerPoints and such. Some of it was before I was, you know, all, all on board. But I don't think that that hurts us to have one more meeting, bring this back on the 29th as a special order of business, and vote on it then.
Just to that point, I was notified, and you can, I guess, correct me, the city manager said we couldn't bring it back. He said it has to be a regular city council meeting.
Yes, it does have to be a regular.
It can't be any special. Okay, so City Clerk says it has to be regular. Regular would mean, and the city manager's walking back to the dais, I believe regular means May 13th meeting? Okay, so the May 13th meeting. So then the question becomes, if we don't, you know, vote affirmatively for this ordinance and have to wait, you know, three, three weeks, what position does that put the city in, in regards to this project?
And the answer's, the answer's in jeopardy. And so I've asked Mr. Desai, who was already writing homes, coming back. We can give you more particulars of what that jeopardy actually means. I think I heard briefly Alderman Wilson's comments about the potential of stopping the project. I mean, I think that's something we would have to, I don't think we have the information before us this evening to be able to do that, so. But certainly, we would have to, the bond issue cannot go forward as scheduled. The dates that have been arranged have been in the pipeline for several months. The noticing requirements would all have to start again. So I think that issues would all have to be dealt with. And again, I don't think we're in a position this evening to adequately address that.
Honorable Mayor, may I speak?
No, Mike, no. We gotta, we gotta keep it up here. Thank you, though. So, alright, I got a lot of lights on here. So Alderman Witten, and then I'll go to Alderman Rainey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything that Alderman Wilson said is, is, is correct, and Alderman Fleming, I, I agree with you, the way you, you put it, this is really, really important. The entire time I have been on the council, and I think Alderman Rainey would probably say the same thing, Robert Crown has been an issue. We looked at every possible way to try and, other ways to fundraise for this, or fund it. We looked at public-private partnerships. We found out how disastrous those were for so many other communities. And then we realized we were going to have to do it ourselves. I can still remember the first time I walked into Robert Crown when my kids were little, and I thought, what the heck kind of building is this? And it has only been deteriorating since then. You know, when I see what we are about to build, what we are building right there on that corner, you know, I look at an entirely new community center, very different from what Robert Crown has always been. It's, it's health and wellness for everyone in the community. It's ice skating. It's this affordable preschool. I know many, many kids who are now in college who were, who went to that preschool, because that was the one their families could afford, and they really, as the testament, testimony tonight indicates, it was a superb preschool. But on top of it is this library, something that people have been asking us for, for so long, and to have it all combined in this building is extraordinary. You will be able to go to the library while, while one of your children is playing in the gym, while someone else in your family is ice skating, while, while something else is happening. Or it's a meeting space. We are so lacking meeting space in many places in the community, and this is meeting space. I mean, I look at this as a place that is really going to address the needs of people, no matter what age you are in Evanston. You can walk that track. If you're, if you're a senior, you can, in the sunshine, you can meet friends in that library. We know how amazing and extraordinary the services are that are coming from our main library, and here's a chance to put it in a place that where we really have not, we've been lacking library services for so long, and real community services for so long. You know, this is, this building's gonna last for 60 years, I mean, the way it's being built. And so tonight is the night when we decide to build something that really is gonna benefit our community for the rest of our lifetimes. And it, and it will. We will, it'll be renovated, it'll, other things will happen. But, and also on the outside, those fields, my kids played in those fields when they were running, you know, up to their ankles in water. And the numbers of times, different games were called off because it had rained the day before. We know how transformative the turf field has been at the high school for all, so many sports, for both girls and boys. And this is another opportunity to have our kids playing sports right here in our own neighborhoods. And so often, we have heard from parents who their kid can't play the sport because there aren't enough spaces, or their kid can't play the sport because you have to drive them to Palatine to play it. I, you know, the, all of, in all of the ways that this is a true community center, that's what we've got the opportunity to go forward with now. And we can't stop the construction right now. We'll end up with a shell. And, and, you know, that, that's the last thing that this community needs. This is our opportunity. This is, this is gonna improve the lives of so many Evanstonians, no matter where you live.
Mike, you can't, you're not, it's, it's up here, I'm sorry. You don't understand the rules. But, you know, we don't, we don't sit here and correct everything that people say as well up at the dais. I mean, somebody came up here and said there was a $7 million deficit this year. There's not a $7 million deficit this year.
But Mayor, what we've just heard from the city manager is this will stop the construction.
We did, and...
That is what we just heard.
We did, we did hear that.
This stops the project.
We got several other speakers. We got Alderman, let's see on my list, Alderman Rainey. Did you want to speak, or you turned your light off? I wasn't sure. Okay.
I made a motion to overrule.
You can call him.
She made the, she was saying she made a motion to overrule, okay, that...
I seconded.
I think you did. I mean, I think somebody, somebody seconded it, but...
It was seconded, and debate should be limited to just that motion.
Okay, so does anybody else want to debate on that motion? I got two other lights, Simmons and Ruth Simmons and Braithwaite, on that motion to overrule.
I guess I could ask for a point of clarification from the city manager. And Alderman, will you withdraw your motion, just so I can seek that clarification, because I think there may be two parts?
Which parts?
Oh, so it's, it's just, yes, yes. Just, do you mind withdrawing your motion? I have a couple of cares. So my first clarification is, I want to truly...
You have to say I withdraw my motion.
...understand where we're in jeopardy if, if we held. And with that caveat, I am in support, and I think Alderman Fleming was also in support. But two weeks ago, I was the one that asked, based on the concerns that I heard from my meeting, I would like to have another conversation. And I think at that point, I was supposed to circle back with the city manager, just to understand the impact of waiting. So I, I want to be clear that if it's jeopardy, let's understand why and how, and if we cannot clarify it at this meeting, then I'm leaning towards it isn't, there isn't truly a jeopardy. So can you explain to me how, if we delay this even one week or two weeks, how it puts the whole project at risk? Just for clarification for all of us behind the dais, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So what is most at jeopardy then is the continued funding of the project. So we are, we have been tracking to a May 16th sale of the bonds. If we, we cannot move forward with continued preparation with that sale if there is not another meeting until May 13th. The, the plan with the bond council, with the financial advisors, with the rating agencies all tracked to that date. So we would have to stop, we would have to take the, the bonds out of the market as they were planned to be sold. We would have to explain to the rating agencies that are about to rate the bonds, what has occurred, and we would have to reset another date. And so I don't know when that date would be. In the meantime, we have a project that is continuing, that I will not have the ability, the city will not have the ability to pay for. And so we will have to make the decision that while there is this question, it will likely cause concern in the bond markets, which will mean that we'll still be rated, but the rating will be in jeopardy, it will cost us more to sell the bonds. If the council decides on May 13th that you want, it will take even more time. I, I don't know, I've never been down this road before, but we have a $54 million project, which we will not have the ability to pay for. And so I think the council, I will have to come back to the council prudently and say, we probably would need to stop work, because we don't know how we're gonna be able to finish paying for it. There have been issues and questions regarding donors. Certainly, as I think we've all come to learn, that donors like certainty. And if this project now, there is not a way to fund the conclusion of the project, to finish the project, that is tremendous uncertainty, and so donors would have to question, is this the best way for them to invest money in our community? So Alderman Braithwaite, members of the council, that's my best estimation at this. You know, clearly, the cost of issuance, I think, will go up, because the bond markets will say, does this project truly have the full faith and credit of the city as conveyed by the governing body as a home rule community in the state of Illinois? So that is absolutely certain. If, for the action tonight. The rest is just my best educated guess.
Sure.
Given the years that I have worked in this business.
Sure. So I guess my follow-up, and thank you very much for the explanation. We have approximately two years of construction on the building. How, just...
Well, the, well, the building is scheduled to be completed in early December, so, so the, the second year of the construction is the demolition of the existing facility and the construction of the, of the field. So are, we are on track to occupy the building in early December, have programs there... So are, we are on track to occupy the building in early December, have programs there. We are scheduling teams with that, understanding in other uses. The library has done that. So it will be difficult for us. I think if a construction is stopped to certainly meet that deadline, then we have the winter issues on the back end of this.
Sure.
Again, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be honest with the city council. I'm not trying to be hysterical in any way, shape, or form. But I think this is a major, major issue for a project that we have been working on. We talked about 2016. Mary Rosinski over the weekend asked, where was the feasibility study for this project? The feasibility study for this project was 2011.
Right, right.
And so we are in the eighth year of planning. And it's interesting, when you look at the feasibility study, the numbers that were provided in 2011 are much closer to the 2019 numbers than I think many people realize. So this has been an eight-year project, and we have a building that is nine months under construction.
And, and thank you for that clarification. So I would say, Alderman Fleming, I was the person who asked for the meeting, and I think I said it a couple of weeks ago, I don't think we're presenting any new information, but just clarification to the questions that are being presented to, to the members of the community. And so to that, I, I would feel it would be irresponsible for me to vote to hold with all those factors at risk. But I would like to host another meeting, independent of this conversation, for, to address some of those questions. I will be honest, I'd be surprised if it's gonna change anyway. But at least, we've made another attempt to educate people in terms of the amount of work that has been done. So thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Rue Simmons.
So the problem here is, this financial decision was made without including the folks that are struggling most to stay here. And right now, we have to decide on what's best for the city. We need the building. I mean, I'm not ever arguing that we don't need the building and all the amenities that are coming in there. But it led with ice hockey. And we've added on amenities that better serve the rest of the community. And now here we are, having to decide between challenging affordability and having an incomplete project that would also be a disaster. And so this speaks to the process. Like, how did we get to this point that we did not have this information out there? How did we get to the point that we are challenging affordability, and now we don't have any option that works for the residents? Like, either way is a challenge for the residents. So I still don't understand how there is not another workaround to have another meeting to give more information to the residents, to give them the understanding on what this means, what the agreements are between the donor community. Why don't we have any more options? And Hitesh just came in, I mean, if you wanna speak to this city manager, if you wanna give me further explanation, it just seems like there must be another option. Another way to get the information to the residents that they're requesting before we move forward.
All right, thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Hitesh, Clerk Reed has a question for you, based on a board that he sits on.
Not on a board that I sit on, just based on my role as clerk to, to confirm bonds as to their surety. I have a question. So if we have an understanding that the bond is likely going to pass the council, and we'd have a three-day window between May 13, correct, and May 16?
And I think, Mr. City Clerk, if I could just interrupt. So Hitesh, what you've missed while you were driving home was that the city council is now reconsidering its decision. A motion that it's considering would move a final decision on this to Monday, May 13.
Okay.
And so, so that, so that, Mr. City Clerk, thank you for letting me interrupt, but just to give you the context of what we're talking about. I have shared, while you were coming back, the concern that it is, it is many months in lining up this date with the FAs and the bond rating agencies, and that we would likely not be able to move forward with two days' notice, given the uncertainty that we would have to reset that sale to sometime in the future.
Right, and, okay, go ahead.
But is it possible to move forward? Is it
Now, yes, let me just, yeah, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. So, yes, I was just talking to, right after this item passed or surpassed with the FA, the financial advisor, and the bond council, that, about the next steps. And the next step is, we prepare that called the preliminary official statement, POS. And that we market for three weeks to the underwriter, potential people who want to buy this thing, before we can close, not close, before we have the final sale by competitive bidding on May 16. So we need that time. Three days is much less. The other thing which I might suspect that, when I was talking to one of the analysts at Fitch Rating Agencies, and they say, we get all the Evanston news, we, they have subscribed to their feeds, about the budgets, what's going on. So that might cast a negative shadow on that, that why city council decided to postpone this vote. And that could affect our rating. I mean, they are coming out with the rating on Wednesday, April 24. But they can reconsider that, in light of the city council's actions. Or even if you take the action, they would be notified, and they might, yeah, kind of change it. I mean, again, I'm just thinking, talking about the probability that there.
But if, if, if the council is purely looking to receive more information, it seems as if the vote is in favor. Is your honest opinion that
Yeah, generally, this is my
But we can't, we can't assume that.
What you're assuming
Your city staff cannot assume the, the council. So we are going to have to stop the process, as Mr. Desai said. You know, we were, we're about to embark on a three-week sale process.
Right.
The rating agencies are prepared to issue the rating pending the second reading of an ordinance.
And then we need almost three weeks to close, when we kind of, you know, and it's a lot of documents to be signed, reviewed by the bond council, to be submitted to the county and other agencies, before we can have final money on the hand. So when we close the deal, and that's, right now, proposed, I think, to be closed on 10th of June. So even if we stay on course, we are not going to see any money before 10th of June.
Thank you. Alderman Saffron.
Sure, all right. So here's where we are now. Tell me if I'm correct. Alderman Rue Simmons just wanted to talk about holding it a week.
You can't.
Rather than discuss it, we jumped in, cut off debate. That didn't happen. Now here we are, we haven't approved anything right now. What are our options?
I mean, I can check with that, but as I said previously, like, we looked at the timeline, you know, when we started this process, with the bond council, with the financial advisor. There is a third party called Discloser Council, the attorney firm, Ice Miller, who looks at our POS, the preliminary official statement, which we compile and get it out. As a marketing, that's a marketing document, that, what the city's trends are in that. So, yeah, I mean, I'll have to look at, but it could potentially delay the sale of the bonds, and then the closing of the bonds.
Okay. And Ms. Mason Cup, the 29th of April and the 6th of May are not options. It has to be a regularly scheduled meeting, so the 13th is our, that's what the rules say.
Correct.
Could we suspend the rules?
Not on a project that involves this much money. That is legal advice. It works, we're talking about millions of dollars in a bond rating. That's just my advice.
All right, we have a few more lights up here. Alderman Nguyen.
Yes. While you, excuse me, Mr. City Manager, you have mentioned, and I have discussed this with people who have contacted me, that we have a, on our city webpage, we have a tab for Robert Crown, the new Robert Crown project. Can you describe for us what is on that Robert Crown page? Is it possible to even put it up here?
Sure, it absolutely is possible, so
Because I think, you know, I've had several residents call me and ask me questions about things, and I get the answers for them from this Robert Crown webpage. Many of the people I've talked to have, they're, they're only listening to some of the critics of this, and they're not taking the time to actually research and find out the facts that are out there. And this, I think this is critically important, that people know that this information is available, and it has been available for a long time.
Sure.
And that addresses many of the points that the people who've come and spoken to us with questions about this have raised.
Sure. And I think we're bringing it up. It starts with actions beginning in January of 2016. Again, I thank Ms. Rosinski for her inquiry, because there really is a history of the project that, that started in 2009, between 2009 and 2016. So we just added today, matter of fact, the request for proposal, the feasibility study, my apologies, the feasibility study, and the initial work that was done on the property, the, so that has been on the website for some time. So we've been very transparent about the processes. We've been very transparent about how we plan to pay for it. And quite honestly, it's been a policy decision to the city council. The city council saw the numbers. If you recall, the final work that was done was right after Mr. Lyons's departure. We brought in Bill Stafford. Mr. Stafford came before the city council and said, this is how you will, if you wish to move forward with this project, this is how you pay for it. And so the city council agreed to that. I think it's important also, we've talked about the Tefr hearing. I think one of the reasons we've gone forward with the bonds is because the council's already approved the issuance of the entire amount through the Tefr hearing that was held last year.
Right. So And one of the things I just want to add to the mayor and the city council, that yes, the way I talked to Stephanie and Laura is here, that why we are going, look, a couple of months earlier than the last year with the schedule, that we might run out of the money by June for the Robert Crown project. So that's why we are a couple of months ahead compared to the last year. So that is one of the reasons, yeah. Laura, you want it?
No, feasibility study for
Order, 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 order. You can hold up your signs, but no, okay.
Mayor Hagerty, city clerk, honorable members of the city council. I'm Laura Biggs, city engineer. So as we've been doing the project, we spent about $10 million on the construction contract, and the burn rate has been about $1 to $1.5 million per month, as they have been working. Part of what it is limited, how much is spent, is the first part of the project is to enclose the buildings. That requires only a limited number of staff to be on site. However, there's essentially three building shells that are being built, and the first building shell, which is the main ice rink, is very close to being enclosed. The second shell, which is the secondary ice rink, will be enclosed shortly after that, within a month. And then a large number of trades that only do work on the interior will be coming to the site and doing work. So our burn rate is anticipated to go up pretty rapidly, to $2.5, then $3.5, then $4 million a month, and up to $5 million in the middle of the summer per month. So when I look at the cash flow projections, which we've worked through pretty clearly with the architect, with the contractor, with our own staff, and with our finance department, that would show us hitting the original $24 million bond that was sold. We will have spent that by June slash July, depending on the exact numbers, which is why, working with Hitesh, he had indicated, we should really work on selling the bonds much earlier than we normally do. We usually don't sell them till midsummer or fall.
Pretty weak for make a difference.
Thank you, Laura. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And the time that I've been on the council, we've enjoyed a very solid bond rating for quite some time, correct, Hitesh?
Yes.
Yes, and, and part of that is, I think, the perceived financial stability. So, you know, saying that we're gonna hold on this, we're not gonna approve the bond issue, I do, I do think jeopardizes that. And a substantial portion, you know, we can, we look at the total number of what it's gonna cost, but if you increase the interest rate on that, it not only affects this project, but it affects all of our borrowing.
The CIP side too, yes.
Right, right. So capital improvement projects, so if we're, if we're really interested in protecting, you know, the, the cost to the taxpayers, and preserving the interest of the taxpayers, this is really not the way to do that. Jeopardizing the bond rating is not the way to do that. We're not gonna be able to do the same level of capital improvements, potentially. Materials have been ordered, those are, you know, being delivered on a rolling basis. So we're gonna end up, if this stops, we're gonna be paying for materials, we're gonna be looking at a shell of a building. And at the end of the day, Alderman Braithwaite and I had a meeting at the Crown Center. There was, I think, well over 100 people there. And the finance staff was there. They answered all of the questions that were asked of us and them. Nobody left the building, I don't know, not that long ago.
February.
February, okay, so February. So, so that's not that long ago. So, you know, the, my perception is that this kind of chaos is perpetuated by social media. I think it's perpetuated by a small number of people who simply want to stop the project, and simply want to create adversity for our council. You know, you see, you see this, the same kind of thing getting repeated. And we approved this, we made a decision, we made a financial decision. It was a hard decision. It was planned for, for a very long time. And if we are truly interested in protecting the taxpayers, we continue to go forward with what we decided to do. You don't stop the largest project that the city's done in, in, you know, certainly in my memory, midstream, and potentially cause catastrophic financial impacts to the community.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk, then Alderman Saffron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Wilson, for, for your comments. I absolutely agree with them. My, my main concern here is what message this sends, not only to our donors, but the folks who are gonna be buying our bonds. I mean, this creates, it doesn't look like the council is committed to this project. And that's unbelievable. To those of us who have been sitting up here for so many years, talking about this and working hard toward it, and, and to a project that's gonna serve the entire community in a way that we all can be proud of. I, I just, I just really don't understand why we're doing this tonight. There were opportunities in the recent past, if there needed to be a meeting, we could have set a meeting up. We could go ahead, and I think Alderman Braithwaite alluded to this. I mean, we can go ahead and have a meeting even after our vote tonight, and explain to people who still don't understand. There's an incredible amount of information out there. And I've talked to a lot of people who have read on social media, and who are, have, have concerns that have been flamed on social media. And when you talk to them, and you give them the information, they understand, they understand how long we've been working on it. But please don't do this. This project is just really too big.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Saffron.
So it's a big, important project. But what happened was that Alderman Rue Simmons wanted to vote on holding this a week. We could have had the vote. It was seconded by Alderman Fleming. Alderman Wilson jumped in. And then we decided that we weren't gonna listen to what Alderman Rue Simmons wanted to talk about, rather than vote on it. It would have lost. We would have had the same vote, the 6-3 vote, we would have been out of here. We'd be in executive session for the last 45 minutes. Instead, she gets condescended to, look at the website, Robin, that's where your answers are. She doesn't get heard out. That's the problem. Nobody wants to stop this project. This is the, this will be the best project in the history of Evanston. I have no doubt. And I realize there are a lot of people who are really worried about the cost, but it's a generational project, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. You look at where it is in the city, and what's there now, and how important it is for all the residents of Evanston to have a place to go. This is a hugely important project. But Alderman Rue Simmons has a right to ask a question, and say, let's hold off for a week. But instead of hearing her out, you jumped in with something procedural, and here we are. So let's run the vote again, let's have it be 6-3. Let's, let's just get this over with. But the problem isn't this, it isn't these signs, it's the fact that she was disrespected that harshly. And I watched it. That's what it was. It was a little kid jumping into shotgun, being like, no, call the question, don't listen to Robin. That's what's unacceptable.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Alderman Saffron. All right, I don't see any more lights up here. Everybody has talked out. I gotta make sure, we, we had a
Fleming has a light?
No, Alderman, we got, we got one more, we got one more.
I mostly did it just to mess with you, because you were so confident.
That's okay.
No, I just, I, you know, I, I do, I explained in a lot of unnecessary words, probably, that my residents do like the project, I, you know, I do have some concerns, but I also do vote with my residents. I also do understand the concerns of the people. You know, I, I'm not a bond master. I don't see the, the big need in not having another meeting. But I also know that we do need to move forward. I do not, no one wants, as we said, an empty shell of a building, or any other ramifications that come from that. So I will go back to my original statement of, of supporting this project. I do think that two things we should have learned as a council from here I do think that two things we should have learned as a council from here. One is that we do need to give our peers the floor to get some clarification on decisions that we're making, even if it takes more time. Two, we can always do a better job with communicating with our residents, even if, you know, we feel like we've put it all on the website, we've done all the things we think we need to do. I think there's always time for improvement, particularly in this national government climate, for us to hear from and answer the concerns of our residents to the best of our ability in a very thorough way. And then I had a third thing, which was, oh, I actually just wanted to thank the clerk for, although you were here another hour. I do thank you for always being educated on Robert's Rules of Orders and making sure that we do things appropriately, because giving, particularly the tension of this conversation, I would hate for us to have done it wrong and then have Attorney General, whoever else tell us we did it wrong, and have a bigger issue. So thank you for being diligent.
Thank you.
And I am glad that you were not cut off in correcting us.
Thank you, and I concur with what you just said. Alderman Rainey.
But when you do hold something over Alderman Simmons, that does cut off all the debate unless, unless, you know, we have a discussion about it. And that's, that just really, on something this big, we would have ended up on the 13th, and then it would have been too late to have, then it would have been too late to have the bond issue sale. So I thought that was an inappropriate motion, and, you know, so, I mean, I felt that there was nothing else we could do other than to challenge that. So, I mean, that's, you know, like they say, this ain't beanbag, this is baseball, so...
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Rue Simmons.
That was an old political saying, "The same beanbag."
So the, I've never wanted to stop the project, and I look forward to the families in the Fifth Ward going to enjoy Robert Crown. The problem here that I have is the same one that the residents have, being dismissed, decisions being made by the most privileged in our community, and not having a voice that is heard. I, right here on City Council, have been dismissed by my own colleagues. Sometimes it's like I'm speaking a different language because it's not what you want to hear. So I understand the frustrations of the residents. They ask a simple question in an email, it's not that hard to reply to it. If you're saying, "Oh, all the information is online," then just point and click, send them a link or whatever, if that is the actual case, and don't just be dismissive. So all I'm asking is that we don't continue to treat our residents like this, and I'm demanding that you don't continue to treat me like this, because I work just as hard as everyone else in this City Council. I serve the residents that have the most need, and I should be heard. Our residents should be heard, and that's all that I'm requesting. I absolutely don't want to stop the project. None of them want to stop the project. They know how much of a disaster that would be. So if they, and we've seen the emails, we've seen the emails come in, respond to them. Like, just don't, I try to respond with all the information that I have, and I follow up and get the information that I don't have. And so we won't get to this point where we have to deal with the signs and jeopardy of stopping a project and reducing our credit rating and all of these other potentially disastrous things, if we would respect everybody in this community as we say that we do. We're welcoming, we're inclusive. We need to do that by having equal participation and allowing a voice for everyone. Usually it's pretty reasonable. So that's all that I'm asking, and I don't want to stop the project, but I also don't want folks to come to me and, for a real-life example, I thought I was going to have a conversation about family focus, and I get there, and it is about Robert Crown. Robert Crown is a done deal. It's happening, it's moving forward. I'm just asking that all of Evanston be true to what they say about inclusion and equity and wanting the most vulnerable among us. That's just like a fun thing for people to say sometimes, and there's no meaning behind it. And if there's meaning behind it, we would have had some opportunity to respond to them about how this is going to financially impact them. It may only be that it's $100 a month, or whatever it might be. There might be some organizations willing to subsidize that additional burden, but at least respect the people and give them the answers that they need, because we're stressed out. The tax assessments are very stressful. The low wages are very stressful. The opportunity gap, the wealth divide is very stressful. So the hint of any additional financial burden is stressful. It doesn't matter if it's $10. Many families are already in a deficit and having to leave Evanston every day. So these are the calls that I get as a Fifth Ward Alderman, and I imagine that you get different calls in different wards, but every day I'm getting a call from someone that has to move because they can't afford to stay here. They can't afford their rent, they can't afford their water bill, they can't afford transportation to a job, they can't afford to move from a low-wage job to a moderate-income job because they can't afford to get off of the subsidies that they have. They have to stay stuck in oppression, and this is what I'm talking about. So I want to be heard, I'm hoping, I understand this is going to be passed, but I'm asking that we hear the residents if we want to honestly keep the diversity that we have here. That's all that I'm asking, and that we don't repeat this going for a major decision for the city.
Thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Seeing no lights, we'll see. All right, what do we...
Well, she withdrew her motion.
Alderman Rainey withdrew her, drew her motion.
So I guess call of the wards.
So, no, we have to, we have to do a vote on this.
So I move that we overrule the motion to hold.
Okay, so this is just a vote on overruling the motion to hold, which was on the floor. Okay. So City Clerk, can you take the role on that?
Yes. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
No.
Alderman Suffertin.
No.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
All right, so overruling the motion to hold, passed six to three. It needed to...
I think it required seven.
Two-thirds, no.
Two-thirds, two-thirds, isn't two-thirds six?
Two-thirds is six.
Okay, so six pass, so six means that that hold doesn't hold, so to speak, no pun intended. And now we're going to, and now, okay, Alder, okay, so, okay, so everybody's clear, overruling the motion to hold, passed the council six to three. So Alderman Will, and it had already been introduced and seconded, so now we're going to have a vote on A-23 ordinance 27-019, authorizing 2019 A and B general obligation bonds.
Should we just do another motion and second, just to be sure?
Why don't, why don't we, just to be sure?
Yeah, authorize A-23 issuing the bonds.
That's improper.
Okay. Ald, City Clerk, can you take the role, please?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
No.
Alderman Suffertin.
No.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
And Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
All right, so A-23 ordinance 27-0-19, authorizing the 2019 A and B general obligation bonds, passes the Evanston City Council on a seven-two to vote, with Alderman Rue Simmons and Alderman Suffertin voting no. All right, we're now going to move to call the wards. Who was up first today, Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to quick make a referral to planning and development, I believe, to include a definition of heritage trees in the city's preservation ordinance and in, where appropriate in the city code. People are using that conversation, also city staff is using that in conversation, that term in conversation, but it's not defined. And so I would like to see that under the purview of the Preservation Commission and the Community Development Department. That's all.
The referrals to the Preservation Committee?
The P and D.
Good to hear.
All right, thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the Evanston Kiwanis Club, as well as the many students who showed up this past Saturday for the community cleanup. There are over 60 students, which is more than we've had in the past, walking around both the Second and Fifth Ward in West Evanston, helping to clean up the neighborhood. So just want to say thank you very much for that. I want to follow up on Alderman Simmons' statement, just to let you know that your voice has been heard stronger and louder than I've heard it in the past, so I want to acknowledge that. Two weeks ago, we asked for the meeting, and I think if this conversation has come full circle, we understand where the mistakes have been made, but more importantly, the need to listen to our residents. So I had made that request two weeks ago, and I still make it, so I'm making a referral whether to the city manager, just to organize it to where we are able to present all the wonderful information that highlights the work that has been done. And if we can schedule that in the next two to three weeks, I think that that would be a good thing, and...
Braithwaite, I'm still a little confused exactly what kind of meeting, is this a ward meeting?
So it's a meeting, I think it's, so I didn't want to limit it to my ward meeting. And the issue started at the ward meeting, I had members from the Fifth Ward meeting. I think that it is clear that there are agitators that are out there that want to advocate for their position, but I also think in that noise, there are people who are just misinformed. And if it means holding another meeting just to discuss the financials, I would like to allocate staff time to present that information. I think we've been inundated with emails, Alderman Rue Simmons is absolutely right, of people asking the same questions. So if it means taking 20 of the top questions and just literally going through that PowerPoint presentation, whatever the case may be, and answering those questions, then that's what we should do. And that's what I'm advocating for, and if that's not clear, I can say it again, or maybe turn off, yield the mic to someone else.
And we are happy to do that. My concern is we've had multiple meetings like that.
I agree, I agree.
And we have the same small group of people who are just, who do not, do not accept the answers.
I agree.
So we're happy to do that again.
I agree.
But I, but I just caution the council that, you know, these have been contentious meetings, not because of any reason other than people just disagree with the answers. And it's a democracy, and we're happy to have people disagree, but I just want to make the council aware, we will do it, and, but we will state the facts as we have them, and we're not prepared to argue every single point of fact. If, Alderman Braithwaite, if that's acceptable, we will certainly move forward.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, I want to remind everyone in the Third Ward that we're having our quarterly town hall meeting at Lincoln School this Thursday from 7:00 to 8:30. We'll be, I'll be introducing Chief Cook to the community, and please join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. We had a, I think, a productive meeting of the Ethics Subcommittee earlier this evening. A number of the community members were there, so a good discussion on some of the points. Because of the fact that the Ethics Board themselves want to look at the proposed draft before we send it on to council, there is likelihood that we are going to have a follow-up meeting. It was my intention to get it to council at the next Rules Committee meeting, but I guess we'll cross that bridge. So we'll await some feedback from that, the Ethics Board, and see what that looks like. And if we need to have another meeting, we will. If we don't, we will forward that to the council at a future Rules Committee meeting. In addition, Alderman Braithwaite, I've been trying to give a lot of thought to, you know, how to, you know, get, you know, information out on a more broad basis. I think perhaps something more in the line of a presentation-style type of meeting.
Sure.
As opposed, you know, we had the question-and-answer meeting, and unfortunately, we had to wrap up the meeting when one of our staff members was, you know, had profanity yelled in his face.
Right, right.
So that was kind of an unfortunate conclusion of that meeting. But, you know, there are more and more questions coming up. I believe, I feel very confident that we have the answers, so just as you're kind of structuring that, kind of consider that, that kind of structure for the meeting, just to, you know, present information and, you know, make sure that the people that show up wanting that can actually get it.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Alderman Rue Simmons.
Thank you. We have the official grand opening for a Giro Plan at Evanston this Friday at 2:30 PM. All are encouraged to attend. We also have our ward meeting, which will be the second Wednesday of the month. We will have on the agenda the owner of the parcel at Emerson and Jackson, where there was a proposed development. That owner is going to come and hear us on what we would like to see at that, at that end, at that lot. So all are welcome to come and share your opinions with the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Suffertin.
Tomorrow's the ribbon cutting for Normandy Remodeling on Central Street. Welcome to the neighborhood. And May 4th, 8 AM, the Willard PTA Roomage Sale.
Terrific, thank you. Alderman Ravel.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to remind residents of the Seventh Ward that I'm having a ward meeting also on Thursday at the Evanston Ecology Center, starting at 7 o'clock. And among our topics is a little opportunity for people to hear more about Robert Crown and get some questions answered.
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, I was at a meeting today, an event, actually, at Northwestern. The, it's an organization called the Graduate Leadership and Advocacy Council at Northwestern, and they honored Shane Colombo, the young graduate student who was murdered on Clark Street last year. Very enlightening and very wonderful ceremony. Also, on Thursday, the same night as your ward meeting, April 25, at 7 o'clock at Levy Center, I'm having a ward meeting, and it's going to have to do with the reassessment, the recent reassessment for this Evanston area, and the effect it will have on our next tax levy, Evanston tax levy, and the effect it's going to have on your real estate tax bill next year. And it's really going to be pertinent for all residential and commercial tax bills. So please come, it's going to be really important. Also, we'll have a brief presentation regarding the recent court ruling on the James Park ComEd and NICOR lawsuit. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Ninth Ward residents who came out on Saturday morning, about 25-ish people, to talk through the issues that were important to them. And that affordable housing came up again, and I would like to make a referral for city staff for our next Affordable Housing meeting, that they would bring information referencing the Long Beach, California, has a tenant relocation fund, where developers are required to help tenants relocate if they purchase their property and they are forced out. So I would like us to look into that as a way to potentially help tenants. I also just want to kind of follow up on what I said earlier. So I, I know sitting up here, there's a lot of things we're required to, or asked to learn or expected to learn, and Robert's Rules of Order has been one that I've attempted to learn, but not mastered, and I really count on, you know, whatever legal staff we have there to keep us in track there, even when things are moving fast. So I am going to encourage the city manager to make sure that that, that happens at all times. Again, want to thank the city clerk for bringing to our attention when we have error in that light. And then my second thing was regarding kind of this, again, with the, this is just an example, but with the Robert Crown. So I know many of you all have been up here for the nine years or whatever that has been discussed, and then there are some of us who are new and have learned what we've been told about the project. I really count on city staff to educate me. I do a lot of my own work, but I am reliant on staff to give me the full picture. And so, again, given that perception rules, and people, for whatever reason, true or not, feel like they don't always get the most information from our staff, I'm really going to implore us to make sure that we are communicating, and I know everyone is not going to, you know, be swayed, but that we are communicating the most accurate information we can with our community. I think that if we always put the most accurate information out there, then even if people disagree, we know that we've done our part. I know that even in the last couple of weeks, when I've had conversations about this, it has been like polar opposites with the community understands about the project. And again, I've been here three years. When I got here, I was presented with lots of information about the project. You all had lots more context than I did in terms of why it wasn't $20 million, which is the number floating around. So I do think we have to take some ownership here in some of the community frustration, that people do feel like, you know, they have to do all these FOIA's to get information or, you know, tap whatever, Alderman, they think is going to be listening. So if we can all really kind of go beyond what we think maybe is required to get information to people and answer questions, and just be very diligent about that, I'm hopeful that that was going to help with some of the community outreach. that that was going to help with some of the community outrage. And again, I think Alderman Simmons is right, we have to show it here as well. I know I've sat here before and felt like I've made comments, and then, you know, in my mind, I'm thinking of mine in the Twilight Zone, nobody seemed to make a comment or understand what I was saying. So I do think we have to model all of that here, if we want other people to have that same level of understanding and engagement that can be respectful, even when we disagree.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Fleming. There were two wrap-ups. Alderman Fisk, I think you had one thing maybe you forgot, and Alderman Braithwaite.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just concerned about the news release we got from the Police Department this afternoon about the phony arrest warrant scam with the spoofed number, and I thought we should bring that to the public's attention, Chief, that apparently there are people out there deceptive practice. Apparently four residents have been, have reported being contacted by somebody who falsely claims to be Sergeant Joe Bush of the Evanston Police, and tells them that they have a warrant for their arrest for missing a jury summons, and asks them to give them $2,500 to go to the bank and obtain cash. This is, the caller spoofed with the caller ID of the public phone number to the Police Department, so anyone receiving this, the ID that appears on their phone is a legitimate number from the Police Department, and I'm, I'm really concerned. I have a large number of elderly people in my ward who, you know, might be contacted, and from someone telling them they've, you know, they've missed a jury summons. And that might seem very, very real to them. So, Chief, I'm glad you've sent out this information, but I hope that we can share this widely with folks.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite. Thank you so much, I would not be able to sleep tonight if I didn't. First, I want to wish Honorable Ms. Holmes a happy belated birthday. She celebrated her birthday this weekend, and she wanted me to be sure to announce that this Sunday, she's inviting you all to attend Mount Zion's 125th Anniversary Celebration at their 11:00 AM service, and there's also a 3:30 service. As you may know, Mount Zion is one of our oldest black churches in the city of Evanston, with a lot of history and commitment, both with its parishioners and service to our community. And then the other thing that I forgot, I'm this second, myself and Alderman Ruth Simmons are hosting our neighborhood meeting.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, it's been a lot going on this evening. So that is going to be my second for residents and people who are interested in learning more about the air monitoring. We have been discussing that over the past, I think, two to three years, and now we have finally gotten to a point where we have, we have issued the RFQ, and there's response, so we will have professionals on hand to talk about and demonstrate the equipment that is going to be used to monitor the equipment, excuse me, monitor the air quality for the next six months. As well, we'll be giving an update on some of the capital improvements around the neighborhood. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity.
Sure, you bet. Alderman Wilson, could you lead us into executive session?
Yes, I move pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss the agenda items regarding litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A and C11.
Second.
All right. City Clerk, can you take the roll, please?
Alderman Fisk.
Yes.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Yep.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
All right, thank you. We are recessed into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We'll see you next week at the special meeting.